Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the April 7th, 2015 Regular Meeting of the Pickwa City Commission. Would you all check and make sure your cellphones are turned completely off, please? As they might interfere with our broadcast signal. And then stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Fess?
Here.
Commissioner Martin?
Here.
Commissioner Vogt?
Here.
Commissioner Wilson?
Here.
Commissioner Terry?
Here.
For our first order of business tonight, I have a proclamation declaring May Motorcycle Awareness Month, and Mr. Dave Griffin is here to accept this. Dave, would you permit me down? I'm going to test this with you.
I've got to buy a motorcycle. I think I'll get a motorcycle.
I do. I'd like to help him.
It'll probably fall off.
Dave, I do have a proclamation for you, and it reads, "Whereas safety is the highest priority for the highways and streets in our villages, cities, and state; and whereas motorcycle riding is a popular form of transportation and recreation for over 200,000 people across the state and millions across the nation; and whereas, in an effort to make motorcycling in Ohio a safer and more enjoyable sport, motorcycling organizations from around the state are now planning a collective venture to promote motorcycle awareness; and whereas all motorcycle organizations, clubs, dealerships, groups, and highway safety officials in our state should join a bait of Ohio Incorporated and the Motorcycle Ohio Program in actively promoting safe operation, increased rider training, improved licensing efforts, and motorcycle awareness; and whereas during the month of May, all roadway users should unite in the safe sharing of the roadways throughout the state of Ohio. Now therefore, I, Lucinda L. Fess, Mayor of the City of Pickwa, Ohio, do hereby proclaim the month of May, 2015, as Motorcycle Awareness Month. In the city of Pickwa and the state of Ohio, I urge all members of our community to join in recognition of the significant occasion and achievement of motorcycle organizations and enthusiasts." So we're plenty early with this, so you ought to get the word out.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Do you have anything you'd like to say?
We will be taking this proclamation to Columbus on May 2nd. We have a ride from Sunbury, Ohio into the State House with a... We're escorted by the city of Columbus and the State Highway Patrol into Columbus, and we'll stand on the State House steps, and we'll take these proclamations and state who our cities are that has done the proclamations for us. And I'm proud to say, this is the first time our region, Region 6, we're going to have quite a few of them. We're going to have several of them. So I'm up to 20 right now, and that's... I've always just sat back on the bench before, you know? But I'm the director now of Region 6. We're a seven-county area in Miami, Dark, Shelby, Miami, Dark, Preble, Montgomery, Green, Clark, and Champaign Counties. So we will take this to Columbus with very much pleasure, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
As we move on, we move now to the Consent Agenda, and I'll ask the city manager.
Yes, ma'am. We have three items on the Consent Agenda tonight. One is the approval of minutes from March 17th, 2015, which was a regular city commission meeting. And we have two resolutions. The first one is a resolution of appreciation for the public service of Kenneth C. Watson as a city employee for... And he's retiring with 27 years with the Power System. Mr. Watson could not be here tonight, but Bob Bowman with the Power System will accept it on his behalf.
Bob, Resolution R-60-15 reads, "A resolution of appreciation for the public service of Kenneth C. Watson, Jr. as a city employee. Whereas Kenneth C. Watson, Jr. has retired as journeyman line crew leader with the Power Department, and whereas his retirement follows 27 years of faithful and dedicated service to the city and its citizens, now therefore be it resolved by the commission of the City of Pickwa, Miami County, Ohio, all members elected thereto, concurring that. Section 1, in recognition and appreciation of the public service of Kenneth C. Watson, Jr. as journeyman line crew leader with the Power Department, this commission tenders its unanimous and respectful tribute by this resolution, which shall be a matter of public and permanent record. Section 2, this resolution shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period allowed by law." And I have signed it, and it has the seal of the city. If you see that Ken gets that, and with our appreciation. Thanks, Bob.
The next is a resolution of appreciation for public service of David A. Short as a city employee, recently retired with the Police Department with 21 years of service. David is here with us tonight, and his wife wants to join you up here. She certainly can. Okay.
Dave, Resolution R-61-15 reads, "A resolution of appreciation for the public service of David A. Short, a city employee. Whereas David A. Short has retired as police officer with the Police Department, and whereas his retirement follows 21 years of faithful and dedicated service to the city and its citizens, now therefore be it resolved by the commission of the City of Pickwa, Miami County, Ohio, all members elected thereto, concurring that. Section 1, in recognition and appreciation of the public service of David A. Short as police officer with the Pickwa Police Department, this commission tenders its unanimous and respectful tribute by this resolution, which shall be a matter of public and permanent record. Section 2, this resolution shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period allowed by law." I have signed it, and it has the City of Pickwa's seal. Congratulations, Dave. We're going to miss you.
I just want to thank the City of Pickwa, obviously, for giving me a job for 21 years. I greatly appreciate it. And I also want to thank the fellow officers who had my back, and I hope they felt like I had their back while we were out there. And I just want to thank all the commissioners. I appreciate it. And Stacy, I do appreciate you as the prosecutor. So, thank you very much.
Oh, that'd be great. Thank you.
We also have Dave's wife in the audience with us tonight. She was a little shy and didn't want to come up with him, but we want to thank you also for the 21 years that you've put up with Dave being a police officer for us. Thank you. That's our Consent Agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
I move we approve the Consent Agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Consent Agenda. All those in favor signify stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The Consent Agenda has been approved. Moving to all business, Ordinance Number 4-15. This is the third reading this evening.
An ordinance amending Section 94.21 of the Pickwa Code relating to fees for use of park facilities.
Mr. Brookhart will provide the staff report.
Thank you. As stated in the past two meetings, in February, the Park Board met and unanimously approved raising fees relating to use of the park facilities. The last time the fees for the park facilities were raised was in 2009. The increase in fees will help offset operating costs and maintenance on the buildings. Attached, you will find Exhibit B shows the current rental fees, and Exhibit C shows the proposed rental fees. And city residents will continue to get a discounted rate.
Thank you, Brian. Commissioners, you've heard three readings on this. Does anyone have any questions for Brian? Does anyone in the audience wish to address this resolution? If not, do I have a motion, please?
Move to adopt Ordinance Number 4-15.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to adopt Ordinance Number 4-15. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Fess?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt?
Aye.
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
As we move on, Resolution Number R-33-15. This resolution was tabled on the 3rd of May... Or, excuse me, Feb... March, March 3rd, 2015, and I would need a motion to bring this resolution up from the table. So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to remove Resolution Number R-33-15 from the table. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Vogt?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Fess?
Aye.
Resolution Number R-33-15 has been brought from the table, and we will now address that resolution. Commissioners, do you have any comments?
Yeah, would it be possible for us to change the way it's worded for, instead of a price not to exceed $40,567, to either $31,992.04, which would be with a 10% contingency, or $34,942.04 with a 20% contingency? Instead of leaving us open for them to possibly run all the way from 29 to 40?
That's fine.
Which one would you guys like? 10 or 20%?
Your call.
My call?
What would you like, John?
Okay, 10%. Change it to $31,992.04. Yep.
Okay.
04.
04. Okay, we have a... I guess you made a motion to amend this resolution as stated. Is there any comments, Commissioner? If not, do I have a motion to amend the resolution?
I move we amend the resolution to change the not-to-exceed price to a cap of $29.042.04 with a 10% contingency, which makes it $31,992.04.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to amend the resolution as stated. Would the clerk call the roll, please?
Commissioner Vogt?
Aye.
Mayor Fess?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
The resolution has been amended. We now have on the table Resolution Number R-33-15. Any comments? Anyone in the audience wish to speak for or against this resolution? If not, do I have a motion?
I move to adopt Resolution R-33-15.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt amended Resolution Number R-33-15. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Fess?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt?
Aye.
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Fess?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt?
Aye.
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
As we move on, Resolution Number R-33-15. This resolution was tabled on the 3rd of May... Or, excuse me, Feb... March, March 3rd, 2015, and I would need a motion to bring this resolution up from the table. So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to remove Resolution Number R-33-15 from the table. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Vogt?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Fess?
Aye.
Resolution Number R-33-15 has been brought from the table, and we will now address that resolution. Commissioners, do you have any comments?
Yeah, would it be possible for us to change the way it's worded for, instead of a price not to exceed $40,567, to either $31,992.04, which would be with a 10% contingency, or $34,942.04 with a 20% contingency? Instead of leaving us open for them to possibly run all the way from 29 to 40?
That's fine.
Which one would you guys like? 10 or 20%?
Your call.
My call?
What would you like, John?
Okay, 10%. Change it to $31,992.04. Yep.
Okay.
04.
04. Okay, we have a... I guess you made a motion to amend this resolution as stated. Is there any comments, Commissioner? If not, do I have a motion to amend the resolution?
I move we amend the resolution to change the not-to-exceed price to a cap of $29.042.04 with a 10% contingency, which makes it $31,992.04.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to amend the resolution as stated. Would the clerk call the roll, please?
Commissioner Vogt?
Aye.
Mayor Fess?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
The resolution has been amended. We now have on the table Resolution Number R-33-15. Any comments? Anyone in the audience wish to speak for or against this resolution? If not, do I have a motion?
I move to adopt Resolution R-33-15.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt amended Resolution Number R-33-15. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Fess?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt?
Aye.
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Resolution Number R-33-15 has been adopted. Moving to new business, Resolution Number R-62-15.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a lease agreement to permit the usage of a portion of Lock Nine Park and Linear Park to Main Street Pickwa.
We're going to ask Dr. Brookhart to provide the staff report on this one tonight.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Jim Brookhart. I live at 1,003 West View Drive. And last year, we hosted an event that was tentatively going to be at Lock Nine Park called Down the River, Down a Beer. Due to poor weather, we ended up moving that, but I'd like to come back and try and host it again on the river at Lock Nine. We have a date set of August 22nd. We do river and bike trail events early in the afternoon, beer tasting from 4:00 to 7:00. And I may mention that today is National Beer Day. Didn't know that until a little bit ago. I would have thought it would have been December 5th. That's the day that prohibition was repealed. So I'm not exactly sure why it's today. So there'll be music throughout the day. We'll solicit food vendors to sell food there. We expect probably 500 people to attend. There'll be... People will receive 20 tickets. They can get a three-ounce sample of beer while they're there. Sample cups will be provided. Oh, we'll have some beer swag items for raffle. The proceeds will go to establishing a fund for a river steward program. And I think that's just kind of in the works now. University of Dayton has a more formal program where they see the river as a real vital economic and aesthetic interest for the community. And I think that's one of the reasons to try and host an event down by the river and at Lock Nine. But it'd also be a lot of fun.
Are you guys going to schedule the events for the morning also? So that like when you put out your flyer or show a schedule of events, it starts at X time, and then the beer tasting's 4:00 to 7:00?
Right. That's exactly right. The plan would be to have river and bike events from 1:00 to 4:30. Probably stagger those. Have a river event from 1:00 to 1:30, a bike event from 1:30 to 2:00, a river event from 2:00 to 2:30, something like that.
Okay.
Anyone else have any questions for Dr. Brookhart?
Yeah, I think you didn't mention the food that was going to be there, having food this year like before?
Yes. Not like before. What we did last year is paired the food with the beer.
Right.
This year, we expect probably to have closer to 80 different beers available for sample, and have local restaurants, if they would like to participate, to sell food there. Last year, the food was part of the ticket price.
Right.
This year, that would be separate.
Okay. Yeah, it was really good. Aside from controlling the weather, it was a great event. It really was. And if people didn't go to it, they really missed out. And listening to you talk about beer, we may have to add another hour, but I mean...
Well, I didn't do too much talking. I won't do very much talking this time. But, you know, our country was kind of founded on beer. We were... I was in Baltimore visiting my son, and I went to Fort McHenry. And it's... Last year was 200 years since the Star Spangled Banner was written. And so we went to Fort McHenry, saw the flag. So the flag is huge. It's 30 by 42 feet. It's about the size of a half of a basketball court. And it was so big that they had to assemble it in a brewery. Just saying. So, and the pilgrims, they didn't really mean to land at Plymouth Rock, right? They were... Really wanted to go farther south. And so there's... From a journal, I have to write it down so I forget, but... So there's a quote from a diary from one of the people on the Mayflower. "So in the morning, we came to this resolution, to go presently ashore and make better view of the two places we thought most fitting for us. We could not take time for further exploration, our vittles being much spent, especially our beer, and it now being the 19th of December." So they weren't really looking to land at Plymouth Rock. They were looking for a carryout. So our country was founded on beer, and this is just another fun event to showcase the river and the bike trail and have some fun.
Well, since it was... The flag was assembled at a brewery, we can be grateful that we have straight stripes on the flag then, right?
That's right.
Could have been a little wobbly. So, well, thank you, Dr. Brookhart. Is any other questions for... Well, good luck, and I hope the weather's good this year.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thanks for your time.
Any other questions? Any comments? Any questions or comments from anyone in the audience?
I move to adopt Resolution Number R-62-15.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Vogt?
Aye.
Mayor Fess?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Resolution Number R-82-15 has been adopted. So we can have your beer tasting down on the river. Resolution Number R-63-15.
A resolution authorizing a three-year lease with the Pickwa Youth Baseball and Softball Association.
Ms. Wall will provide the staff report.
Thank you. Last meeting, we approved leases for youth football and youth soccer. This lease is for the Baseball and Softball Association. I've met with the leader of the organization, who did not have any changes to the lease. They do have new leadership this year, going in the right direction. It is a three-year lease, just like the football and soccer leases.
Thank you, Stacy. I wanted just to interject a minute. When Dr. Brookhart was up, we did kind of forget to mention that this is in conjunction with Main Street Pickwa and the Pickwa Arts Council. And I see Lorna and Jordan both here with us this evening, so thank you for being here as well. And thank you, Stacy. Commissioners, do you have any thoughts or questions on the lease for the Baseball and Softball Association? Does anyone in the audience wish to speak to the resolution? If not, do I have a motion, please? Move to adopt Resolution R-63-15. Second. Moved and seconded to adopt Resolution Number R-63-15. Would the clerk call the roll?
Commissioner Vogt?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Mayor Fess?
Aye.
Resolution Number R-64-15 has been adopted. Resolution Number R-65-15.
A resolution authorizing a purchase order to Franklin Equipment, LLC, for the purchase of a new wheel loader for the Public Works Department.
Mr. Brookhart?
Thank you. The Public Works Department would like to purchase a 2015 wheel loader for the Parks Department. We sent this out to bid and only received one bid back, and that was from Franklin Equipment for $62,559.45. That came in under what we budgeted this piece of equipment for, for this year. On this piece of equipment, we included several options, such as a salt spreader, a snowblower, and a snow blade, and a narrowing kit. What the narrowing kit is, it's a smaller set of wheels and tires for the machine, so it enables us to use this on sidewalks in the downtown area and out on 36. And we can actually go across some of our bridges and clear snow off the bridge sidewalks as well. This will allow us to clean the city sidewalks much more efficiently than we can right now. The equipment that we're using, we currently have, doesn't have an enclosed cab, and our guys can only run the equipment for short periods of time. They have to get in a truck to warm up. Being out in the weather conditions, this equipment will have an enclosed heated and air-conditioned cab, so they'll be able to be out for longer periods of time and just make our snow removal a lot more efficient. And we'll be able to do that quicker. The loader also comes with a high-flow hydraulic system, and that will allow us to use turf and landscape attachments that we currently have for our Bobcat. The Street Department has several attachments that we have for our Bobcat that we use for turf work in the Street Department. We'll also be able to use these in the parks as well and for this unit. Some of the attachments that we'll be able to utilize are our Rockhound, our soil conditioner, our auger, our asphalt planer for the walking trail maintenance out on our bike trail. We have a grapple bucket for the front end and loading forks as well. We will use this to maintain our playground mulch for turf renovation and enhancements, planting trees, and other park maintenance. If you approve this loader, after we deliver a purchase order to them, we expect to have this within 45 days.
I should also point out that although we only received one bid on this item, this is also under state contract, and I believe this is a case where going out to bid and not just taking the state contract, I think it was listed under state contract, about $73,000. So there's times when we want to go out separately from state contract, which gives us the ability to get something a little bit cheaper. So I think this is the case for this, in this particular situation, too.
We searched for another piece of equipment similar to this that would work on the sidewalks, and I couldn't find anything. And in going out for bid, I wanted to make sure that there wasn't something else out on the market that I just missed going to some of the other manufacturers. I checked with John Deere and Case and Bobcat and a lot of the larger manufacturers. Sometimes there are some smaller ones that you just miss because they're not as large, and just in the hopes that maybe we'd find something that was comparable that we could get a closer price with. But there's nothing else out on the market. Everything else that I looked at was a little bit larger on scale, and it wouldn't work on our sidewalk, so it wouldn't give us the capabilities that we need to have to utilize the equipment in several different areas and be able to use it for all four seasons.
Thank you, Brian. Any questions for Brian?
When you use the... This equipment for the playground mulch, what does it do? Does it turn over the playground mulch or add to it?
We would use it for a little bit of all that, yes. We can actually get inside the playground and get the mulch closer underneath the playground equipment.
Okay. So it's pushing it around?
Yeah. It pivots real tight. It can get into tight, narrow areas to where we don't have to manhandle the mulch as much to get it underneath the playground equipment. We can get closer with it. It'll also fit in the back of our... We have a new dump trailer now, and the bucket will go in the back of that, and we can move the mulch from the trailer to the equipment and get underneath it easier.
Okay. Thank you.
Does this have a...
Does it, does this have, like on Bobcats and stuff, they have a quick attachment plate?
Yes, sir. It does have a quick attachment plate on the front of it. So, we can, we can move different attachments around from the inside of the cab, just like we can our Bobcat. The difference between having the Bobcat in this unit is when we take the Bobcat into the parks, it tears the turf up when you turn and maneuver with the equipment. So, we have to do additional work when we're working out there. Having this piece of equipment, we won't have to do additional work when we're working in the parks because it won't tear the turf up like the Bobcat does.
Yeah, I found that out the hard way. Spun a Bobcat around in my backyard, and it dug way deeper than I was planning on having to fix.
It's easy to bury one, too.
Yeah.
Anything else, commissioners? Anyone in the audience wish to speak for or against this?
Nick Alexander, 713 South Roosevelt. Would this actually be used to bring the winter maintenance on the bike path up to par with the rest of the county?
Gary? Brian?
This piece of equipment would be used on trails, too.
We can use this equipment on the bike trails.
Difference between can and will. I'm curious. Since most of the rest of the county, you can use a bike path year-round, except Pickwa.
There, I think we're cleaning off part of that now.
Part of.
Yeah.
That's, again, will this be used to actually bring us up to par with the rest of the county?
Well, I don't know what the rest of the county's par with, so I'm not sure what that, what that means.
They cleared the path. Here, it was done maybe once or twice the entire winter.
The county has 14 miles of pathway?
You can get on, almost from the nuclear power plant where the county takes over and go all the way into Troy during the winter without having to worry about large piles of snow all over the path.
We'll do our best we can with, with.
That wouldn't be 14 miles, though, Nick.
That's maintained by the County Park Department.
Yeah, Pickwa at most runs 13.
13 and a half miles.
And again, Troy and county keep theirs clear. Here, you get around the corner, all of a sudden, you're now six inches of snow, and you're kind of stuck. It's not been a good winter for the bike path.
Well, we hope to continue, we hope to continue to do better, so.
Anybody else wish to speak to this? If not, thank you, Brian. Do I have a motion on this?
Move to adopt Resolution R-65-15.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt Resolution Number R-65-15. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Fess?
Aye.
Commissioner vote?
Aye.
Resolution has been approved. Resolution Number R-66-15.
A resolution repealing Resolutions Numbers R-110-07 and R-65-09, establishing a naming policy for the city's streets and facilities.
As you're aware, the policies for naming facilities in the streets in the past has been very cumbersome. If you read through the, all the information that is in your packet on the process, it's quite difficult to name anything. In addition to that, the Community Diversity Committee no longer exists, saying most of the naming process is tied back to the community diversity. So, tonight, we're asking you to repeal both of these resolutions so that we can get back to a simple version of naming streets and facilities.
Commissioners, do you have any? I mean, this was quite a controversial resolution, I believe, when we first had it before us. I don't know if Commissioner vote, do you remember? Or maybe it was Commissioner Wilson at that time, when?
Was on the Diversity Committee at that time, and it is cumbersome.
Mm-hmm.
A lot of double talk. And at this point, I would like to make a motion to adopt Resolution R-65-15.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution Number 68-66-16. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak for or against this resolution? If not, would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Fess?
Aye.
Resolution Number R-66-15 is adopted. Resolution Number R-67-15.
A resolution awarding a contract to Grissom Construction LLC for the sidewalk ADA compliance program.
Ms. Haverne will provide the staff report.
Thank you. Prior to every street resurfacing project we do in the city, we are required to make all of the intersections ADA compliant as far as the handicap ramps. So, this contract would allow us to hire Grissom Construction to do that work, in addition to the replacement of catch basins that are in need of repair along the paving route.
Thank you. Any questions for Amy on this resolution, commissioners? Anyone in the audience wish to speak for or against this? If not, do I have a motion, please?
I move to adopt Resolution R-67-15.
Second.
Thank you. I have a first, a motion and a second on the resolution. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Fess?
Aye.
Commissioner vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Resolution Number R-67-15 is adopted. Resolution Number R-68-15.
A resolution requesting final legislation to enter into an agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the County Road 25A Phase III reconstruction project.
Ms. Haverne.
This is a formality that we do with every ODOT project that we work with. This would be the final legislation. The job is currently out to bid. ODOT is bidding that for the city of Pickwa. Bids are due in April 23rd, and in order for the ODOT to accept the bids and award the project, we have to enter into the final legislation portion. The project consists of reconstruction of 25A from Looney Road to just past Indian Ridge Drive. It'll be similar to the improvements we made in the last section. It'll be a center turn lane added with new curb and gutter, and of course, the roadway will be rebuilt.
Thank you, Amy. Commissioner?
Will this get sidewalks?
No, this will not have sidewalks. There'll be a multi-use path on the north side of the project, the entire project limits. And then we will have a dedicated crossing that'll get you to the school with one of those rectangular rapid flashing beacon symbols to get the kids on the other side.
Okay. Is there already a multi-use path on the section we just did, or does it have sidewalks?
It has sidewalks.
Then why wouldn't we go ahead and continue the sidewalks all the way out?
Well, that was looked at in the design, and with the high number of volumes, well, Indian Ridge having the high volume of residents on the north side, there were very few residents on the south side. And because of the close proximity of some of the homes to the roadway, there was, during the public meeting, there was no expression of anyone wanting sidewalk on there. And with putting the multi-use path out there, there is access, they can get on it, and then in turn, get into the city on the existing sidewalk.
Yeah, but don't we have somewhere else in the city rule that says when you do a new road, you have to put sidewalks there?
Street. I believe if it's a new subdivision going in, I believe that might be in the code, but I'm not 100% sure.
Well, wouldn't we have to follow that same code if we build a new, rebuild the street?
If it would be a new street that would be going in, then yes, we would. But it's a reconstruct, this is an existing facility.
Okay.
I think a multi-use pa, path would be the right thing for that area out there.
How wide will that path be?
I believe it's either eight or 10 feet. I've got to double check. I don't have the plans.
And, and when would this start and when would this end?
The goal is for the bids to be due in April 23rd, and then I would assume by the time ODOT awards the contract, you're looking at early to mid-June. And the construction schedule now is to have it complete by the end of this year.
Okay. And there will be access maintained as before for the local residents, correct?
It's set up in three different phases. Right now, the first phase would be from Looney Road to the first half of, the first drive into Indian Ridge, which I'm not sure of the first driveway in. But that part would be closed. So, if you want to access that portion, you'd have to go down Looney Road. They'll have a detour set up to 36 to Troy-Sidney, back to 25A. But they're only going to do half of the driveway, so those residents will still be able to maintain access because there's only one way in and one way out. And then we'll move from the next half of the driveway to the half of Indian Ridge Drive, and then the third phase will be from Indian Ridge East. So, there'll always be access because there's only one way in, those subdivisions. But they might have to go around and do a detour to access it.
So, if there's anyone would have a question on all these things, particularly the neighbors, they should, what, call you?
Correct. They can call the engineering department. And everyone out there was notified of the project. They were invited to a public meeting. ODOT requires you to do all the outreach, but definitely, they can call the engineering department if they have any questions.
Okay. Great.
Anything else, commissioners? Anyone in the audience wish to speak for or against this?
Mike Sloan at 2941 Delaware, which backs up to this particular road and so forth. Quite frankly, I like the idea of the pathway much more than the sidewalk. If I heard correctly, it's going to be 10 feet wide?
It's either eight or 10. I'd have to double check.
Eight and 10. That would make it much more usable for most people and bikes. You have a biker here. We can clear the snow. But personally, I applaud that. I think that's a, a good, good use. I don't know how I'm going to get home, but who cares?
Thank you, sir.
Now, for the multi-use lane, would that be two or just one bidirectional on one side of the road?
Amy, do you want to?
It's actually a separated path. It will not be on the roadway. It will be separate from the roadway.
Okay. Will it be, it'll be a single bidirectional, then?
It, no, it'll be, it'll be one path for both lanes of travel.
Bidirectional? And then, is that actually going to be physically separated from the street by a lawn, balisades?
It'll be a tree lawn separating it.
Tree lawn?
Any other questions? If not, do I have a motion, please?
Move to adopt Resolution R-68-15.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second for Resolution Number R-68-15. Would the clerk call the roll, please?
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Fess?
Aye.
Commissioner vote?
Aye.
Resolution Number R-68-15 has been adopted. Resolution Number R-69-15.
A resolution awarding a contract to Barrett Paving Materials for the 2015 resurfacing program.
Ms. Haverne.
Thank you. This is just to award our 15 resurfacing program. We went out for bids, received two bids for this, and Barrett Paving was the only bidder that submitted on the base bid, plus the alternative. They were lowest on the base bid as it was. So, we'd like to award this to Barrett Paving. They would start as soon as the ADA ramps are in place, and we have a completion date of July 31st of this year.
And I'd just like to point out, there's, that the streets that you're approving tonight for paving are not the only streets we're going to be doing. So, we have, Public Works will be doing a number of streets and a number of major patching jobs. So, there's quite a few streets this year that will be, receive new pavement, which are very much needed.
Thank you. Commissioners, any comments? Anyone in the audience wish to speak to this resolution? Not, do I have a motion?
I move we adopt Resolution R-69-15.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution Number R-69-15. Would the clerk call the roll, please?
Commissioner vote?
Aye.
Mayor Fess?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Resolution Number R-69-15 has been approved. Resolution Number R-70-15.
A resolution granting a utility easement to the city of Pickwa.
Ms. Wall.
Thank you. You have heard from Devon Alexander on previous occasions regarding the West Interceptor Ditch. This utility easement is for that interceptor ditch. We need to go on to the property of a private property owner, Mr. York, where we will be removing trees and doing some other renovation of the land, if you will, to fix the project as needed. And this easement is at fair market value as it has been evaluated by a consultant, and it accounts for the removal of the trees and other moving of the property. It is a utility easement that would be permanent to allow us to have continued maintenance or construction of this issue.
Thank you, Stacy. Commissioners, any questions? Anyone in the audience wish to speak to this resolution?
How soon will this work be done? I mean, it seems like this has been something that's a long time coming.
It is a very long project in the planning. We have had several issues with this project. After it was designed, Mr. York thought there might be a leach field in the land, so we had a lot of issues to deal with that. We needed special permission to go on the land to do any discovery, that type of thing. But then, that wasn't, there wasn't an agreement to go in and dig up the land because we didn't want to pay for that expense of trying to find out if there was truly a leach field there. So, the project was redesigned. There's been multiple issues. It didn't go as planned.
I do believe that the bids are expected back in on the project in April, and we'd be able to award the contract right after that.
Okay. So, it would, it would be ongoing this summer and hopefully finished?
Very much hopefully finished.
And Mr. Alexander has been in constant contact with Mr. French and Mr. York about the project, so the property owners are aware of what's going on.
Good.
Thank you, Stacy. Again, anyone in the audience? If not, do I have a motion, please?
Move to adopt Resolution R-70-15.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second for Resolution R-70-15. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Fess?
Aye.
Resolution Number R-70-15 has been adopted. Resolution Number R-71-15.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a lease agreement to permit the usage of a portion of Loch Nine Park and Linear Park to Main Street Pickwa and the Pickwa Arts Council.
We have a special presentation from Lorna Swisher and Jordan Nepper tonight.
Good evening, commissioners. Lorna Swisher with Main Street Pickwa.
Jordan Nepper with Pickwa Arts Council.
After the huge success we had with the Rock Pickwa Riverfront Concert Series last year, our organizations are once again teaming up to bring those concerts back to Pickwa. And the legislation you have before you is to lease the park to us for three dates in June, July, and August 1st for those concerts.
Any questions, commissioners?
It was a great, great success. The only complaint I heard about it was that you didn't have four.
And we took that into consideration this year, but we will still only be doing three this year, so.
It was really well, well-run, and everybody had a great time, and we're really looking forward to maybe in the future, have more than three would be great. But we'll settle for three. That'd be wonderful.
Now, the city manager had told me after the last one that they were going to do one every month.
Well, I've been known to exaggerate, but I do. But I think you should point out there that there's a number of Rock Pickwa Unplugged at the Farmers Market.
Yes, we, um.
Not completely.
Okay.
The, the event is, was incredibly successful and certainly met a need for folks who, who love live music, and as a result of which, we will have a series of concerts at the Pickwa Community Farmers Market this summer, held on the first Thursday of each month. So, that'd be June, July, August, and September, where probably starting 5:30, 6:00, something like that, we will have a concert that will last a couple of hours that will be held in the renovated Canal Place, directly contingent to the Farmers Market. And we anticipate the caliber of performer that is really an opening act for Rock Pickwa to be that same ilk that will come in to do the Rock Pickwa Unplugged Concert Series in conjunction with the Farmers Market. So, we're trying to meet all the needs.
And the hours of the Farmers Market again? And the hours of the Farmers Market, again?
Farmers Market is 3:30 to 7:00 each Thursday, starting May 21st, and this concert will be held, four of those. We're also planning on some, having some other activities in conjunction with the Arts Council, as well as the usual craziness that we have at the market with cupcake contests and pie baking contests and pumpkin decorating and all that kind of fun stuff as well. But we're really excited about being able to use Canal Place as we intended it to when we reconstructed that a couple of years ago and, of course, bring additional folks to the Farmers Market as well.
Lorna, what was the hours of the concert, again?
We haven't exactly decided yet, but they'll probably start about 6:00 or something like that and, and kind of be longer than the Farmers Market hours. So, then, the folks back there, the draft house and Susie's Big Dipper will have ready to eat food. We'll have the opportunity to have folks just in the downtown enjoying our, our beautiful community a little bit longer on those Thursdays.
Great, wonderful. And Farmers Market starts when?
May 21st.
May 21st.
Now, do you have any information on the, on any of the music acts for Rock Pickwa yet? Are you still working on that?
We're not quite ready to announce who the bands will be, but we have, actually, the, the group that has been working on this, we've reviewed over 200 different bands just for this year and that goes with all of them that we reviewed last year as well. We think you're going to be really impressed with the lineup this year. Multiple genres and everywhere from local to national touring acts.
Great. Can't wait.
Okay, any other questions, commissioners?
We'll be there.
Anyone in the audience? Thanks, guys. We appreciate it.
Move to adopt Resolution R-71-15.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution Number R-71-15. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt?
Aye.
Mayor Fess?
Aye.
Your dates are set. At this point, we move to the audience for public comment. Anyone who would care to speak to the commission or have comments to make to us, come to the podium, state your name and address and your comments.
Jordan Nepper with Pickwa Arts Council, again. I just wanted to extend an invitation to the commissioners to come to Dancing With the Pickwa Stars this Saturday. We have two performances. I know that Law Director Wall will be there and so will Mr. Summers as they're dancing, so I hope you'll come out and support your city representatives.
Thank you, Jordan. Absolutely. I was going to mention that in my comments. I'm, when I see them, they're going, phew, you know? They're, they're working very, very hard and as I'm sure all the others are, and I'm sure you're going to make us very proud. So, we'll be looking to see you on Saturday night.
I, I have room in my office for another trophy, so I'm looking forward to Saturday.
Do you? A mirror ball, maybe, Justin? The mirror ball?
Yes.
That would be good.
Next to the Chili Award. Is that correct?
That is correct.
To the Chili Award. I'll tell you. But Stacy probably has cleaned off a place in hers, too, right? Maybe technical or mirror? You could share, one technical, one mirror ball. Then you could both have one. Well, whatever, we'll find out on Saturday night. Thank you, Jordan. Any other public comment? If not, we'll move to the city manager's report.
Uh, no comments tonight, thank you.
We didn't adopt it.
Uh, I wanted to tell you, by the way, you are off the hook for making that statement about every month since Lorna bailed you out with doing the concerts at the Farmers Market, so I'll let you off the hook, okay?
I don't remember.
Nothing?
No, nothing, no comments.
Okay. Commissioners, let's start with Commissioner Vogt, who's all suntanned from his vacation in Florida.
I have nothing.
Commissioner Martin?
Um, nothing.
Oh, my. Commissioner Terry?
Just to congratulate Ken Watson and Dave Short and wish them well in their retirement and many happy days.
Thank you. Mr., Commissioner Wilson?
Uh, May 9th, from 9:00 to 12:00, the city's having a cleanup day. A lot of the public areas will take volunteers to either sweep or clean or whatever. It's a fun time and if you're not sure where you'd like to clean, we can assign you a place, so call the Health Department and they can sign you up and go with that. And also, along with this, the city does have an adopt program where a citizen can adopt a public place and do maintenance there and it'd be a good time to sign up to adopt a place and then on May 9th, you can go there and get started. And it's typically, for the adopt program, it's typically a commitment of maybe once a week, minimum, and you can just pick a small area and they end up putting a sign up with your name on it, so if you let it get a little scruffy, everyone will know. So, uh, so, but, but once a week is typically enough to do that, a little weeding, a little trimming and, and it's kind of fun. I have one and if it gets a little bad, someone will tell me, so I have to run over and do my duty, so. But either one would be great. The cleanup day, we've done that for many years. A lot of downtown areas could use your help and as usual, Lorna's involved. She's involved with everything downtown, so she'll send you where you need to go. So, again, call the Health Department if you have an interest in that or call Lorna. She's very good at giving orders. So, uh, but hopefully we'll see you down for, for cleanup day and, and again, if you have a question on adopting program, I believe, what, call you, Gary? Any questions on that?
Absolutely, yes.
City manager, you can call them and get information and we have areas if you're not sure where you'd like to work, so that's all I have.
Thank you, Joe. Just a couple of things. First, I think we neglected, Jordan, to talk about whether there are tickets available for the Saturday, where you can purchase them and the prices, and if you could do that, that would probably help us a little bit.
There are plenty of tickets available for the dessert matinee. It starts at 1:00 PM. Tickets are $12 and they can be purchased at Reed Morris Hallmark. And there are very few tickets left, but there still are a few available for the dinner performance. The doors open at 6:00, dinner served at 7:00 and the show starts at 8:00. They're $25 and also available at Reed Morris Hallmark.
Thank you. I, I just wanted to make sure that we did have tickets and please think about going up on Saturday because it's a wonderful, wonderful event, very, very entertaining and it's, it's just been a great ton of fun to go watch people like the Chief of Police